Welcome to the July 22 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone at home and here. The first thing up is, thank you very much, George. I should thank you while you panned this to me for sharing the last meeting. Thank you very much. You're welcome. So, items of interest from the Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'll start things out by, I just want to say, I think all the things that have been happening with Create Eugene have been wonderful. And I just was looking at what's coming up. I think it's this week alone is 195 workshops with guitar camp, creative play, weeding, watercolor oil, yoga, spinning, felt, linen lace, zumba, belly dancing, modern dance, ballet, danceability, drawing, photography, and wire twisting. All those things are going on, so kudos to everybody. And then I read about that the expansion is underway at the service station on 99. And so, it will be done by October 1st. They are going to increase their seating there by 75 percent. They are going to have 125 storage lockers for people, so they'll be able to have a place to store their things. They're going to have a new commercial kitchen, which is going to allow them to use healthier food. And they're going to have a, actually, able to wash, they'll be able to use reusable dishes and cups and glasses because they'll have a machine for washing those. And that's all because of our CDBG investment, so. Very, I think, in the midst of a lot of not-so-good news, that's very good news. And then I wanted to say thank you for Sunday Streets. I don't know what the report was, I guess we'll hear, but all things I've heard was a great thing. And then, coming up on Friday, there'll be an opening, the Willamette Bridge, and then in the afternoon, there'll be a ribbon cutting for the new train set, so two cool things happening. So those are all things going on this week.
Okay. Traveling County has been the provider of convention and visitor services for Lane County for many years. And periodically, a contract comes up and they have to submit an RFP, and that process came up at the end of June. And unfortunately, the people at the county are, some people were on vacation, so the process has been delayed. So Traveling County has had to get permission for the month of August to operate without a contract. Evidently, this is, there were three RFPs submitted, so we're just waiting to hear back. And then also, Wednesday evening, my wife and I attended the kickoff of the Tour of Homes by the Home Builders Association of Lane County. John was there, Mike was there. John, I don't know, maybe you might want to give a little information as to the association between the home builders and the Veterans Organization. I'll let you do that. But it was interesting, I've been attending home builders events about 12, 13 years, 12 years maybe, and the people involved in that organization are getting bigger and younger. It's good to see that these builders, some of them are second generation.
That's not what's happening, George.
No, I know what you mean.
Only part of the equation, unfortunately.
People that I used to see all the time at these, at the home builders events are moving on, retiring, and it's good to see these young people getting so involved in the community the way they are through this organization. And the Tour of Homes is just their way of showcasing some of their talents. So it was a pretty good event, and then they had the Tour of Homes going this past weekend, too.
Alan?
Yeah, I got to attend the Eugene Symphony in the Park on Saturday. That was at the Cuthbert. That was fabulous. It was one of those events that was sold out in just a couple of hours. And it's the fifth one they've done, and I've been all five of them. And it's just a great, great time. Recommend it to anybody. I did have a question about the changes in the rules about the food and the no coolers and the one gallon Ziploc bag. That kind of took my surprise, especially since I brought a cooler to have a picnic on the, so maybe we could get a, I don't know if I'm Renee about that. Also attended some of the Bock Festival in the last couple of weeks. That was really fabulous as well. I missed the last Sustainability Commission because of a work conflict, but we are going to have our retreat soon, which will be to plan the work program and incorporate the four, three new people onto the group and to the commission. So if you have any items for the Sustainable Commission, let me know. Also, got, it's Activity Week for a month for the city, and Kurt Corry did a little...
Oh yeah, City Manager's Activity Challenge.
Yeah, Activity Challenge, City Manager. And Kurt Corry did a golf tournament, which I got to play, and that was kind of fun. And that's about it.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As George mentioned, we had the opportunity to attend the Tour of Homes kickoff party, and I was real impressed with that. The work that some of the members of our community do is just real admirable and was a wonderful event. I admire their, the spirit with which these folks do some very hard work and under the circumstances, and remain very positive, and do such a great job, and an important thing in our community. I wanted to say some of this about the Police Commission, but I think I'm going to let my colleague here, because she's looking up some of the detailed information to do a better job of it, from our most recent Police Commission meeting. I'd also like to announce that the Mayor and I will be doing her Mayor's One-on-One in Ward Five together from 5:00 to 6:00 PM on Tuesday, July 30th, at the Market of Choice, the Delta Oaks Shopping Center. So come on by and say hi. Thanks.
Yeah, so the El Rapa Board met today. No big news out of that. We looked over the strategic goals for the organization for the next couple of years. And we went into executive session to do an Executive Director Performance Review, but then we had three members missing, so we decided to postpone that for September, so that we have a more robust discussion. And there were compliments given for the partnering with other organizations, particularly the, you know, creative use of in-kind services and dealing with our respective budget situations and making the best use of resources as they can at the agency, so. But, you know, things are tight. They're doing more with fewer FTE, with fewer workers, and still trying to deliver their service. Human Services Commission, on which Greg and I both serve, also no big news there. There's strategic business planning that's going on there, and I'm a member of that group, which also has folks from the Human Services Network and the Community Advisory Committee, which are all formal parts of the, related to the Human Services Commission. So I think a lot of good thinking about how we talk about human services and the important work that that agency does, and then all the other agencies that it helps to fund. And then on the Police Commission, we just had a changeover in chairs. The outgoing Chair, Cantlin Lang, is moving up to Portland, so she stepped down, and she got many kudos at her last meeting for her good work, including from the incoming Chair, Bob Walker, who said when a young woman his granddaughter's age took over his chair, he was skeptical, but she did such a great job, she dispelled all of his presumptions about how a young woman would run such a group, a diverse group of the Police Commission. So Bob Walker is our new chair, and I think he'll do a great job. And I believe that he and Tamara Miller, who's the Vice Chair, should be at, here at 7:30. So I did hear Counselor Zalinka say he didn't necessarily think it was right that the work plan for the Police Commission is on our consent calendar, so I may ask to pull that off and just have opportunity if we want to discuss that at our full meeting. And then up on the Police Commission's agenda is the Chief is helping us, and staff are helping us put together a kind of panel to look at how our law enforcement folks have to deal with enforcing laws that put them in contact with homeless folks on a regular basis, and get the perspective of officers in the field on how they go about doing enforcement. And that aligns with what we talked about in our work plan.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Just an addendum to Claire's report. September 16th, we're going to, it looks like we're going to have a little bit of a retreat with the Human Services Commission. Just talked to Steve Minella today, and so I think that that looks like it's going to be happening at that time, to kind of go over some budget issues and other things that are pressing in that area. The second thing is the Human Rights Commission, which I'm a part of, is going to have its retreat this Wednesday and Thursday evening. I'll be attending the Wednesday evening, Thursday evening. I have another commitment, I have a group of students that I'm graduating on Thursday. And I think the last thing, and probably the most disturbing thing, is that within the last couple of weeks, I have received a little over a half a dozen calls or emails about our citizens being uncivil to each other, particularly when it comes to racial and ethnic slurs in our neighborhoods. And I want us to be aware of that, because I think that, for some reason, it seems to be increasing. I don't know whether issues on the national front have anything to do with that or not, but I've had people who have either come into my office at work, or called me on the phone, or emailed me about some fairly ugly situations that they may or may not have reported to the police, so, for a variety of reasons. So I just want us to be cognizant of that and understand that there may be some folks under a little bit of stress in our community, and not feeling as welcome as they should.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report, neither one of my committee assignments met this month, they'll meet next month while we're on break, so I'll have something to report. And yes, Counselor Evans, it is disturbing. Race is still a huge, big-time problem in this country. We've made some progress as a group of citizens, but there's, it's not over yet, there's still a long, long way to go, a lot of work to do yet. It's still a horrible problem. Thanks.
Thank you. First, the League of Oregon Cities is meeting in Portland, July 26th to 28th. And the deadline for reduced registration fee is July 31st, in case you're interested. And I urge everyone to consider it and to go by train. I think we should be supporting Amtrak as alternative transportation, and you can go to Portland by train easily. I was at the Symphony in the Park also, I've gone every year, it was really fantastic. It's a wonderful thing that the Symphony does, because it gives people who can't afford to go ordinarily a chance to go. It's an incentive to go, because it's free, and because everybody goes. And I think it also encourages people to support other cultural events, once you've been to something, and you realize it's not something out of your, out of your way, out of your lifestyle, that it's something you can do. And it's more likely to encourage participation in all sorts of cultural events, so I think it's a really wonderful thing that is done. I heard a, there have been some burglaries in my neighborhood, this is a negative thing, but one woman who was burglarized said that the police could not have been nicer. She said they were very sensitive and helpful, and it was, even though the burglary was, burglary was a horrible experience, the police were really great. And she was full of compliments for the way they handled it and handled her. She was extremely upset, as you can imagine. They stole love letters and pictures and things that were really had sentimental value, as well as things, so it was, she needed somebody to treat her with sensitivity. I went to the Southeast Neighbors Board meeting last week. A lot of talk about the picnic, which is coming up on September 15th. And another neighborhood is having a picnic on, friendly neighborhood Georgia, it's on the 28th, 28th at Washington Park. The Southeast is at Hugman Park, and Crest Neighbors are having one sometime soon, I forget when. Those are all three neighborhoods that I have something to do with. Southeast Neighbors are very concerned about the Amazon Headwaters, as they have been for 15 or 15 years or so, or maybe longer than that now. And I think it's really time for the city to do something assertive about saving that land. It is, for many reasons, which fit in with our goals and with the goals of the city, I think. Habitat protection, water quality. There was an article in the paper recently about the, Amazon Creek being polluted. It will be more polluted if we have more houses and more cars up there. It's already in the dangerous situation. And social equity, because, let me stop and try, continue later?
Yeah, you want, you want, more you have to say?
Yeah, a little more about Amazon Headwaters.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, social equity, it's a place that anyone can get to, you can go there by bus or you can go there by foot. It's easier than going up to the Ridgeline, the other Ridgeline Trail, because it's, you can go by the running path, by bicycle, by foot, by bus. And it's, also it reduces, it will be harmful to the carbon footprint if we have more cars going in that area near, near the creek. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, just quickly, as you know, I'm working on a proposal around a council committee on homelessness, and I probably won't be able to get you a draft of anything until sometime during the break. Part of the reason for that is, I'm working with Steve Minella to make sure that this doesn't reinvent the wheel or duplicate work that's already going on. Right now, Lane County is working on a structure for a continuum of care that's required by HUD. And there's a whole series of mandates and work plans around that, and I want to make sure that we coordinate with that. That's not only with Human Services Commission, but also with Human Rights, Housing Policy Board, and a number of other groups. And so, if we're going to create a work plan, it needs to jive with the other stuff that's going on. So I'm trying to integrate that work in, and so I'll get a draft of something to you probably over the break. Also, just a reminder to the folks that may be listening, is we will be having our first all-day Budget Committee meeting tomorrow, where we'll begin to take our first stab at how we're going to approach this giant issue of how we deal with our long-term financial sustainability and stability. I'm cautiously optimistic, I'm looking forward to it, in a, I think, as part of our effort to try to make this a well-run and fiscally responsible city. Last thing, I think George forgot to mention it, is we had our monthly meeting with the auditor, which is going very well. I think both George and I are very impressed with how well the auditor is functioning, responding, and doing things. One of the questions we did ask, which is something that Betty's been talking about, is what do we do around getting feedback from actual people that have filed complaints or filed with the auditor's office? What systems do we use? There are systems in place, and so we encourage the auditor to get us that information in a more clear and succinct way, so we can have a chance to review that and see that they do indeed collect some of that information, have a pretty good response rate. So those are all the things I have to report.
E-Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items, and I'll follow up on George's conversation about the Home Builders Association and the Veterans Housing Project. This year is their annual garage sale, they donated all the proceeds to the Veterans Housing Project and presented the check that evening, so that was very nice, and so there's a kind of a nice partnership there. They also have, many of their members donate time and labor on the homes as well, so that's kind of fun. Also, met with the Raoul Broca Design Team today, kind of a little bit of a kickoff. They're very excited to get started on the project, as we are, too. And in September, there's a work session with all of you, that they'll come on in and kind of have some initial conversations and get some of your thoughts as we move forward. But it's exciting to be moving forward on that project, so that's fun. And then, I also attended the, excuse me, the Symphony on Saturday, and it really was a really nice event. And it reminds me that Carm Hagadorn is retiring at the end of August, and of course, she is responsible, among other things, for the Cuthbert. And the team out there does a really nice job in presenting that facility, so.
Just to follow up on a couple of things, I actually want to ask Claire if she would send us some information, and I know they've had public meetings on the Seneca request from El Rapa for changing the rules on that.
Yeah, so they're applying for a change in their permit, and what we were told today, or reminded of today, is that El Rapa Board, if that was, permit was allowed and then appealed, we would then be in a quasi-judicial role regards to that, so we are asked to take kind of a hands-off approach in terms of the public input on the process. So I'll see if there's any documentation that can be shared, and we'll share it if there is.
Great.
But they did have a robust hearing.
That's what I heard.
Why would we be in a quasi-judicial?
The El Rapa Board.
Oh.
Not the City Council.
She's on the other side.
We is a different we.
Which I serve.
And I did want to say to Greg that I think one of the benefits of having you on our council is that there are people who will tell you things that they might not tell other people, and that's an important thing for us. So I think we will, we will benefit from, from your ear being out there in the, in the community. And I appreciate the fact, I mean, I want everybody to feel comfortable talking to any of us, but I, I understand that some, everybody has their preferences for who they will feel safe talking to about things that are bothering them. So, and I think we've been hearing for quite a long time from Chief Kearns and his reports about racial slurs around the community and incidents occurring, so I think we all know this is building, and what to do about it is, we'll look for, all of us to think about that, because I think it's a really important issue for the well-being of our community. And then Betty, on yours, the Headwaters issue, I know that they appealed from the property owners of the Headwaters, they won their appeal, so that, that sort of changes the game, so you'll have to figure out how you want to approach that with us if you do. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Lane County Community Health Assessment Action Plan. E-Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn over to Renee, who has a team of people here apparently to make a presentation for us.
Takes a community, all right? I'm going to breathe brief as well, just do some introductions. We're very pleased to have partners from Peace Health, Lane County Public Health, United Way, to give us a report on their work on the community health assessment, and the plan that's come out of that. So, I would like to start with Dr. Red Kincaid from Peace Health. He's Vice President there, he's also on the Trillium Board and on LCH Board, Lane Coalition for Healthy Active Youth.
Which means he's one of my bosses.
Yeah, yeah. Dan Reese, who has a, who has a very long impressive title, but I'll say that he's a social worker at Peace Health, who's also in charge of community partnerships, also in charge of innovation and development and all kinds of other stuff, so we're very happy to have him. And Jennifer Jordan from Lane County Public Health, who is also on LCH's board, and has done a lot of work in this arena for many, many years.
Did she hack the house tonight, or what?
Claire did not.
Yeah.
And United Way is also partner. Chris and Chelsea Clinton is here in the audience, not presenting, but also a key partner in this effort. So I'm just going to turn it over to Rick.
Great. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here with the, with the council. This work that you'll see, maybe perhaps some of you have seen portions of it prior to this, but this is really the culmination of well over a year of work by a collaborative. And part of the reason that we're all here is because we represent organizations that are very invested in the health of Lane County. And as part of that, clearly, City of Eugene is the largest population center, and so clearly what happens here has a huge impact across the county as a whole. So what we'd like to do today, we have about 30 minutes, we'd like to present, first of all, some data. And again, we're going to condense probably about a two and a half hour set of slides down into about 30 minutes, so it feels like a fire hose, and it's probably because that's kind of what it is. But we're going to give you a high-level look at some realities with respect to health in our community. It won't, many people have left this not feeling very good. We'll try to leave you with some positive notes, because what we've noticed throughout our exploration of the data is that we have tremendous opportunity for improvement. And with that, we're looking at what that plan for improvement would be. So what you'll hear is what we call a Community Health Needs Assessment, followed by our Improvement Plan. That is our community's plan, and this is a single plan. And again, because we've created a large collaborative, we feel the only way we can affect the health of the, of the community is to have one plan that we all will have component parts of. And clearly, this board and the activities, clearly within the city, will have a portion of this, as you, as you will see. So I'm going to present some initial data, and so will Jennifer first. I get to, normally I have to talk about death, which is delightful, but today I don't. So I'm going to pass that over to our Public Health Specialist, and she'll talk about some of the challenges with the diseases that we have, as well as what in fact does kill us. And we'll look at sort of how we're going to approach that. Dan is going to close with our Improvement Plan, and we hope that it will stimulate some ideas, as perhaps you began to think about how policy and how decisions within the city began to intersect with, and have impact with respect to the health of our community. And so we're hopeful that this will be a stimulating time. Again, we'll present data, and then we'd like some time and hear your thoughts, and we'll respond to questions after that, so. I apologize for the gravelly voice. Occupational hazard, dealing with sick people, so unfortunately, one of my delightful patients has passed on a virus, which I'm slowly recovering from. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, there we go. So we're going to have a set of slides, hopefully you have a copy, a hard copy of the slides before you, and so we're going to go through these relatively rapidly. The importance of this first slide is really to designate that we, this is a true collaborative. Since the start, Peace Health, as an IRS requirement, has had to put together a Community Health Needs Assessment and an Improvement Plan. The new regulations in the Affordable Care Act have asked nonprofit entities to really demonstrate what they're doing in the community, not just what money they write off as charity, but in fact, what, how do you interact with your community? We have to submit a report, in fact did so at the end of June, to the IRS, demonstrating our collaborative efforts with the community in addition to any charitable contributions. Trillium, as part of the CCO, Trillium is the insurer for the Medicaid population here in Lane County, and Trillium has been required because of legislation that actually formed the care organization. And so that legislation required that we also participate in this. And Lane County, as you know, has always been invested in public health, and this is part of their process of accreditation, and so we've been able to look at that. United Way has been a partner that we've brought alongside as we've moved forward and realized that many of the solutions you'll see are going to require a connection with the business community and with the education community in order to really affect health. So as we come through, you'll see why we really need the connection with that part of the community. This is not a healthcare issue, this is really a community issue, and you'll, you'll see what we're talking about. So we do have a common platform, and we all have a little bit different roles. We've had the opportunity to speak with our faith communities, with social service entities, we've talked with their school district leaders, we've been able to be with our business community in countless little times with our rotaries and a variety of other community organizations, as well as other governmental agencies, to try to get a real understanding around how they looked at health, and so all of those things were, will come together. We've also looked at an unbelievable amount of data, and so the next slide just simply has a list of a small number of the data sources we looked at. There's actually several pages that would designate literally thousands of pages of data, both at a national, state, and local level, to try to be able to get these numbers for you. We would like to define the community, and again, this is a collaborative effort over Lane County. So obviously, a county that's roughly the size of Rhode Island, or parts of Connecticut, really, but it's a fairly large county, but yet only has a relatively small population for such a, such a size of county. a size of county, approximately 350,000 people. So as we look at that, all four Peace Health facilities are within Lane County here. We have one facility in Florence and three here in the Willamette Valley. And then the county obviously has those same borders. And Trillium is the coordinated care organization for Lane County. So we all have the same borders. So hopefully, I can move this. As we looked at the population, again, this is why we're here today. As you see our population slide, guess where everybody lives? And the importance of health policy and decisions around healthy lifestyle and living is going to be critical to get the partnership of the leadership within Eugene. And again, this is a community that does have a fairly large rural component, but each of these communities are fairly small. So I'm going to just walk through a little bit of some of the socioeconomic, and again, if you look at data related to education, poverty, what things we wanted to point out were the fact that we do have a relatively large density within Eugene of people who have gone through education and actually have bachelor degrees, whereas you look at a population such as Cottage Grove in Eugene, it's approximately 40%. If you look at Cottage Grove, it's about 12%. So that creates a different dynamic within their workforce and their community. But yet, poverty rates, which are really, we're using the federal poverty level as a designation, are relatively the same. And so we have challenges on both sides. We have a population, and many people speak to that, a significant variation, with a lot of people with quite a bit of education and yet have significant economic challenges. So we thought this was a helpful way to look at our community from that standpoint. When we look at access issues, we wanted to point out the fact that many people do not have insurance. Now, insurance, as you all know, is not necessarily a sign of access. And many people can have very good insurance and have no access. But yet, it is a measure of at least the ability to try to access, whether they can actually do that or not. And we have roughly the same amount of uninsured as the rest of the state. Now, this will change as of January 1. As you know, the Affordable Care Act has also brought on the expansion of Medicaid. And currently, we have 61,000 Medicaid recipients in Lane County. We believe that there is a potential for 24,000 to 26,000 additional Medicaid recipients that will become eligible as of January 1. So half again is many on the Medicaid, in the Medicaid system. Obviously, that's a significant concern for those of us in the healthcare industry. How do we meet that access and create access and meet that again? So it is, will be a challenge, but there will be always uninsured. There will be people that fall through the gap. And those folks are going to need to continue to be addressed. We have a fair population of undocumented folks that don't have access to some of the programs, and so we're going to have to be able to make sure we create good access systems, regardless of whether you have insurance or not. When we looked at the population, again, on Medicaid, part of the reason that we wanted to show you this data is because it really describes the economic stress of our county. When we look at communities such as Junction City, where nearly 40% of the current population are on Medicaid, and again, to be on Medicaid, you have to not only be poor, but we now have categorical eligibility. So you have to be poor, you have to be a pregnant woman, you have to be a kid, or you have to have chronic illness that actually puts you in disability. So there's a large number of people, far greater than 40% of the population of Junction City, that would actually qualify as of the expansion of Medicaid when we lift those categorical eligibility. So the reality is, is this is only a minor indicator of just the economic stress in our community. And again, as you see this data, you really look at that rural component. Now, within the city of Eugene, again, it's the smallest portion on Medicaid, but yet, and these are percentages, so it's still a very large number. So it's still a considerable challenge, even within our community. So I'm going to pass this over to Jennifer. She's going to walk through some of the data around some of the health issues that we have, and hopefully, this will give you a little, an understanding of some of the challenges that we have ahead of us.
Thank you, Rick. So as Renee mentioned, I work for the county health department, and you might wonder why we look at death. I mean, obviously, we can't help the people that are already gone, but we know that we can learn a lot from what people are dying from, and that can help us look to some of the external factors that we might influence to improve the health of the community. So our overall goal is to keep people healthy and well and living as long of lives as they can. And so if we look at the data here, we see that heart disease and cancer are the leading causes of death here in Lane County. And not too many years ago, heart disease exceeded cancer, but we've had a lot of medical breakthroughs and system improvements that have improved that number, but we have not been as successful in bringing down cancer rates. So these are the actual diseases that we're dying from, but if we take a look back behind the diseases at what are the actual causes of death, we learn a lot more. So here we see that far and above, tobacco is the leading cause of death here in Oregon. And we have about 22% of all deaths here in Lane County are due to tobacco use still. And we have just under 50,000 people still smoking in Lane County, about 20% of our adult population. The second line we see here is diet and activity patterns, and we measure those by physical activity and then reports of consumption of fruit and vegetables. And we see that we have a lot of deaths from those problems as well. And what we expect to see over time is that we will continue to chip away at the tobacco problem, and we expect to see the diet and activity deaths increasing. Following tobacco and diet and activity patterns, we have alcohol as a leading actual cause of death, and then toxic agents, microbial agents, motor vehicle accidents, firearms, sexual behavior, and finally, illicit use of drugs. In addition to looking at what people are dying from, we look at the diseases that people are living with. Our nation, for quite some time, has shifted from disease and death from communicable diseases to largely chronic diseases. So we, many of us live for many years, if not decades, with chronic conditions before we die from those conditions. And the chart here shows an example of some of the most prevalent conditions here in Lane County in blue, and then Oregon in red. So you'll see that we have quite a few people living with chronic diseases, and one of our goals is to reduce these numbers so that people can be healthier and more productive and reduce healthcare costs as well. When we look at behavioral risk factors, I mentioned tobacco. So here is just a bit of our tobacco data we have. I mentioned that just under 20% of our adult population is smoking, but what might be surprising is we have about 8% of our eighth graders reporting smoking and about 15% of our 11th graders. And what we might not know is that most people that smoke started before they were of age to smoke. So we have a lot of smoking happening in the eighth and 11th grade population, and those populations continue to smoke for a couple of decades, often before quitting. And because young people smoke for many years before they quit, and because young women tend to have babies when they're younger, we see a high rate of smoking during pregnancy. And we were headed in the right direction here in Lane County for quite some time, and then these numbers jumped up again around 2003. And we see that we have currently about 17% of pregnant women in Lane County, or birthing women in Lane County, reported that they smoked during their pregnancy compared with about 13% at the state. So very concerning numbers here.
And I will point out as well that this is those that report that they're smoking. When we actually have done urine testing for metabolites of nicotine, the numbers actually double that. So again, it's those that would admit that they in fact smoked during the time that they carried the child. And this is from birth records, so at that time, not many people are excited to put a check that they smoked during the pregnancy. So this is about half of what we know is present.
We've looked at diet and activity patterns before. Here is some maps that I've been looking at for about 10 years, but maybe they're new to some of you. So what we have are obesity trends across the nation in 10-year segments. So the first map here on the upper left is the data for 1990, and we see Oregon there in the kind of second, the mid-level blue. And at that time, we had about 10 to 14% of Oregonians reporting that they were of a height and weight that would be calculated to be obese. And similar to Dr. Kincaid's comments about smoking during pregnancy, we do know that people tend to over-report their height and under-report their weight. So these are believed to be quite optimistic numbers, which scares us even more. So if we look to the year 2000, we see Oregon there in the gold color, where we have 20 to 24% of Oregonians that are obese. And if you see the dramatic change in colors there, what we see is, in 1990, we didn't have any states that had an obesity rate above 19%. And then in 2000, we had to add the gold color there, and then, and we just had one state that had an obesity rate below 14%, and that was Colorado. Jump forward just another quick 10 years, and we see that the nation really looks a lot different. So now we have states, especially in the south there, that are reporting rates of obesity that exceed 30% in the adult population. And here in Oregon, we're in the 25 to 29%, but we're really on the edge of that. So I expect at the next version of this that we will be in the over 30% category. And while tobacco is, the problem is still significant, we're having more success in that area where the state's goal in terms of obesity is to decelerate the increase. We don't expect that we will reduce this rate, but we hope that we can slow the increase. We have some challenges with substance abuse and malhealth here in Lane County. The first slide is alcohol deaths per 100,000, with Lane County in blue, Oregon in red, and the nation in green. You can see that our local rate exceeds both the state and national level in deaths due to alcohol. And in terms of suicide, we see similar numbers. So our state rate, or our rates here locally are higher than both the state and national rates.
And these are deaths related directly to alcohol toxicity. This is not accidents, motor vehicle accidents, and drunk driver. This is people who have actually died from ingestion.
Just very briefly on infectious disease. I mentioned before that we've had an epidemiological shift really from infectious disease to chronic disease over the last 100 years or so, but we do still have some particular challenges with infectious disease. And here locally, part of the problem is increasing rates of parents who decide to not have their children immunized. So the slope of the chart is not what we want to see. So this is data for children, unimmunized children in children's facilities like preschool, kindergarten, first grade in yellow, and then seventh grade in blue. And that we, and we see that over time, the trend of not, deciding not to immunize children is increasing. The way that this is categorized is named as a religious exemption. We know that actually very few of these are religious exemptions, it's more of a philosophical exemption. When we look at the state of Oregon, this is a little bit hard to see, but we don't want to be dark blue. And there we are in dark blue. And this is even more concerning because we are the worst state in the nation in immunizations, and Lane County is the third worst county and the third worst state for immunizations. And I believe, if I remember right, we're at about 8.7% or so percent of our parents choosing not to immunize their children.
One of the challenges with this is it really creates a lack of what we call herd immunity. So if you, the more people that are immunized against a specific disease, the less likely epidemic can occur. And so we are at the portions, we're well above the percentage we want to be in order to make sure that we have quote-unquote herd immunity. So areas, we've already seen whooping cough epidemics significant in the state of Washington. We've seen a dramatic increase, actually, just in the last two weeks of whooping cough. And so again, those are the types of things without immunization can become epidemics. And so that's the reason that this is important.
And one of the challenges with this is we've done such a good job of eliminating these diseases that people have forgotten what it looks like. So polio is almost eradicated worldwide. We haven't seen a lot of whooping cough. I haven't seen it in person, but I've just watched videos, and it's really, really terrible to, you know, watch a very small baby just gasping and gasping and gasping for breath. Pretty serious issues for our community here. Moving forward, so we have tried to be upbeat about some of it. In addition to the points on the slide here, one thing that I might say is that we actually know what to do about these problems. These largely are not scientific problems, they're largely political challenges, frankly, especially in terms of tobacco prevention. We know exactly what to do there. And just going to the points on the slide, 69% of Oregonians report that they want to quit. Here in Lane County, 47% tried in the last year. 78% of obese adults report that they're, they would like to lose weight. And Oregonians report taking action in their communities to create healthier options. So we, you know, have the desire here, and from the public health side, what we want to do is make it easier for people to succeed in quitting or losing the weight or not gaining it in the first place. And on the tobacco side, we would certainly prefer that children don't start smoking in the first place. But it can be challenging to be healthy when the reality is fast food is cheaper and more accessible than fresh produce. Many of our neighborhoods lack safe sidewalks and parks. We're exposed to smoke in our home, at work, or in the community, and our schools and workplaces often lack access to healthy food options. So I'm going to wrap up with the data there and pass this over to Dan to share some of our key improvement priorities that we've identified based on this extensive review of the data.
So before we turn our attention to the, to the positive side of addressing some of these areas of concern, which hopefully will be a call to action on the part of our community, it's important, I think, to take a few moments to recognize and applaud, frankly, the leadership that the City of Eugene has already played over the years in promoting community health. And there's a laundry list, actually, of things that the city has done and will, I think clearly need to continue doing. But an example of that, I believe that the City of Eugene was in the forefront of creating bans on smoking in restaurants and bars, if not the first, one of the first in the state to do that. There's a long track record of the city promoting healthy lifestyles. The most recent example, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to participate in just yesterday with the Sunday Streets program. So I think we need to, again, not think we're starting from scratch here, and we need to recognize those good works and to really learn from that and build upon it. As Rick had mentioned, there's a myriad of issues. We didn't touch on all the issues that emerged in our assessment that was not just based on, you know, data, but also in talking to the community and talking to folks from all different spheres of the community about the things that were affecting their health. And what we needed to do is realize that if you're going to really have an impact, you really do, a community needs to focus. And that we're striving for is something you might have heard of before, but community impact, collective impact on these issues. So we can't boil the ocean. So we have to really go through a process of discerning, what are those areas of opportunity? There's an area of need, and you've heard several of those. We have to also know where there's evidence that we can make a difference, that they're not insurmountable problems. We can be hopeful that we can change these things. We have to look at where there's readiness in the community to get organized around these issues. And also, we need to look at what else is going on in the community that affects health, and maybe some other folks are already starting to organize around and rally around. Public safety is an issue, economic issues. Child abuse emerged as one of the key areas of concern, by the way, that we didn't touch on here, but we know that there's going to need to be sort of a solid line between some of this work and other work, this really important work that's already been launched in the community. So what we arrived at is a limited set of improvement objectives that you see here. So the five areas that we thought needed focused work, and we had a real opportunity to improve, was health equity. And we can go into a little bit of detail about what that really means, but it means that all populations, all communities within the community had equal access to improvement in their health. And currently, we know that's not the case. We need to prevent and reduce tobacco use. We need to prevent and reduce obesity. We need to prevent and reduce obesity. We need to improve mental health and reduce substance abuse. And finally, we need to make sure that we have adequate access. And Rick talked about this a moment ago. We have a great opportunity with the rollout of the Affordable Care Act and more specifically Cover Oregon Health Insurance Marketplaces, I believe it's deemed now. But just because you build it, it doesn't mean they will necessarily come. And there's going to be a massive effort in the state in order to enroll folks in their options. And for many folks, there'll be new options available, the more affordable options available to them. But in many cases, the most vulnerable and challenged residents of Eugene are going to struggle the most to understand what is not, it may have some opportunities, but one thing we know it's not, it's not all that simple. And so a lot of folks are going to need some assistance in making, in taking advantage of this new Affordable Care Act. So we need to organize around that. Now, we're going to focus for the next few minutes more on Eugene and what the city may think about and the kind of things that the city could do. And we would encourage the discussion in these five focus areas. We're in the process, I'll kind of wrap up, of where we're going in rallying, engaging all spheres of the community in these five areas. But we're going to first talk a little bit more specifically about what the city of Eugene could take a look at. So in the area of improved health equity, the city could consider how land use, transportation, housing, and other city policy decisions impact health. And I'll just add to this, across all areas of the city and all neighborhoods in the city. Because again, the degree to which all areas and neighborhoods of the city have access to healthy living options may not be the same. We need to use policy to create a community that provides access to healthy options regardless of income or educational and ethnicity. Encourage city staff to participate in relevant community health improvement work groups. I'll talk about some of those work groups in just a moment. And regularly call on the public health officials for input on related decision-making and policies. We do have some excellent resources within Lane County, within the city. I'm sitting next to several of them right now. And we encourage the city to routinely tap into the expertise when you're considering all different kinds of city policies. Consider, just like we look at environmental impact, to look at health impact of policies, things on zoning, transportation, for example. In the area of prevention and reduction of tobacco use, the city could learn more about the impact of tobacco use on the health of the community. I'm sure some of these slides regarding the use of tobacco among pregnant women was an eye-opener for some. And to understand the economic as well as the health impact of tobacco use. The city council could demonstrate strong support for tobacco control legislation, advocate for local and statewide tobacco control policies such as cigarette tax and the increase in cities' tobacco retail license fees. You know, there was several bills in the legislature just recently regarding the state tax. The city could, could look at what's being proposed and choose to weigh in on those. Encourage other local elected officials to join in related advocacy around tobacco use. Because now with things like the ban on smoking in, in bars and restaurants, the impact of that will be greater across political jurisdictions if everybody kind of gets on, on the same page. Consider tobacco-free properties, particularly outdoors. We've taken a look at tobacco-free zones within bars and, and restaurants, but we live and work and play in, in a lot of other places as well. So the degree to which the city could weigh in on opportunities to make those environments more smoke-free as well. And then encourage local, public, and private nonprofit organizations to similarly adopt tobacco-free campus policies. The University of Oregon, I'm pleased to say Peace Health, have all adopted smoke-free environments. And we've actually not only done that, but we've learned a lot from doing that. We learned a lot about what the, some of the headaches can be, and what some of the keys to success can be, and some of the ways to mitigate the challenges of implementing those policies. For example, when you enforce a policy to not just take a stick approach, but, you know, give people that are in charge of enforcing a smoke-free environment some resources to give to people when they're reminded, I'm sorry, it's not okay to smoke here, but maybe hand them a place where they could go for some help if they did want to quit smoking, like the state quit line, for example. With regard to obesity, the city could look for opportunities to champion efforts to both improve nutrition and improve active lifestyle. So certainly, an important area is to support what is really a troubling decline in the availability of physical education in our schools, to have opportunities to use alternative transportation, bicycling and pedestrian. Another area where Eugene has really taken a leadership role, and support public transit, farm-to-school programs, and safe routes to school programs, for example, are great models. Promote and provide for fruits and vegetables in a variety of settings such as farmers' markets, farm stands, mobile markets, community gardens, and youth-focused gardens. Implement fiscal policies and local ordinances to discourage consumption of calorie-dense, nutrition-poor foods and beverages. For example, tax policies and incentives, land use policies, and zoning around the citing of certain types of food options. We just, not too long ago, one of our schools had a fast-food establishment open almost across the street. We look at how we cite bars and other kinds of business establishments, we may want to look at these kinds of things as well. Can be touchy, political, certainly, controversial, certainly, but I think weighing decisions with a lens of public health is very appropriate, without being too prescriptive here. With regard to prevent and, and reduce obesity also, create healthy food and beverage environment so that it'll, it's easier for people to make healthier choices for themselves. To support the adoption of healthy vending machine policies, RICHES champion that effort within Peace Health. Interestingly, we found that the vending industry is starting to, the light bulbs are going off. And I think when they get critical mass to the, and realize where the market is going, that the industry will come along with where the market is going regarding our vending machines. So the city can participate in helping move the market. To encourage staff to select best staff, city employees, to select healthier foods and beverages while serving food at internal and external meetings and events. One thing we didn't touch upon in terms of economic impact, we'll talk about this in just a minute. The city has a huge, direct stake in healthcare costs for its own employees. So the degree to which we can improve our healthy environments for the city, it improves the healthy environments for city employees and can have a positive economic impact on the city as well. To promote, so in the area of promoting mental health and reduce substance abuse, the city could support community organizational policies to promote increased awareness of substance abuse and, and mental health and the impact of substance abuse and mental health issues on the community. Encourage mental health-friendly workplaces, ensuring that our workplaces are not toxic and can have an adverse impact on individuals, not only mental health, but along with that, and their, their physical health as well. And to reduce alcohol and other drug abuse, to promote early mental health and substance abuse screening and assessment and referral policy. So that's something that we're particularly taking a close look at within the healthcare community of providers. Trillium has implemented some, some plans to further assist in the early screening and referral for treatment for mental health issues and substance abuse. With regard to access to care to ensure that benefit packages for city employees includes benefits to staff, would have to encourage the cessation of smoking, Weight Watchers programs, access help with chronic disease self-management programs, and incentives to encourage active commuting. Now, I just heard, I think, from Renee that recently, the city has been successful in starting to put these kinds of health promotion elements into your health benefits package. Is that right? So that's the kind of thing that we would certainly want to encourage, and the city can serve, again, as a leader and a model for how other businesses in the community might do that as well. And I think it's going to be really important for the city to help make the business case for improved health. The economic impact of poor health and the opportunity to reduce cost and improve the economic climate of the community through improved health. Lane County currently ranks 17 out of 33 of Oregon counties for overall health outcomes. The degree to which our public health indicators are positive can be part of how we sell our community to folks who want to come here, our established businesses here. This can be either something that will reflect poorly on the community as a place to come and do business, or to move, or it can be a positive for the community. And we also need to, again, talk about improved health in terms of the impact on the city budget, and the impact on, the pressure on taxes, and the degree to which these health promotion efforts and the degree to which we invest, either in the city budget, county budget, and other ways, how we invest in public health improvement can have a very real ROI. So steps for success, where we go from here, we need to continue to, what has been an extremely energizing collaborative effort over the last year. We've gone out and spoken, by we, I mean, all the folks here speaking to you today have gone out to, and spoken with dozens and dozens of community groups in, in almost every community in Lane County. Universally, what we find is a high level of interest. This is what our citizens want us to focus on. They certainly want our health industry to focus on this, but they want all of us to focus on this. This resonates with them. So, so we want to build upon that now, because we've highlighted problems. Now we want to energize them to know how they could participate in making a difference, a positive impact. And we know that they can. There's plenty of reason to be hopeful. Jennifer cited, this, there's a lot tougher problems out there. A lot of these are going to be tough, but they're not necessarily all that complicated. There's a difference between being tough and complicated. And we can do this. So, so what we're doing right now is organizing the community in a very focused way, and I think it's the last slide in your packet, gives you sort of a high level of how we are embarking on this in terms of an implementation plan. We're very fortunate, and you see here that this core group of Peace Health, Trillium, United Way, Lane County Public Health have been really focused on the assessment process, which we'll be doing periodically, actually every three years, and then, and then the high-level strategies for the improvement plan. But now it's a matter of a much broader implementation throughout the community. And we're very fortunate that United Way has been convening for several years now, the 100% Access Coalition. And a lot of the partners that we need engaged in this work are already around the table in the 100% Access Coalition. We need to bring in more people yet. We need to link to other United Way efforts regarding success, success by six, and early childhood education, and economic well-being as well. So we're organizing these work groups. The work groups will be in all of the priority-focused objective areas that I just described. And in addition to that, we have a communication plan work group around engaging the community and raising awareness. We also have a metrics and monitoring evaluation group, this been convened, that will look at all of the priority objective areas. So these are, as we speak, being organized. Chelsea over here from United Way is playing a key role in that. So we're very excited about it. We welcome the participation of the, of the city, and we welcome you not only as the city council, but as individuals, if you'd like to participate in this, there certainly can be a wall for that.
Thank you very much. George, I've got you in the queue. I just wanted to ask how, how you've engaged with the city in this thus far?
Well, in terms of the city government?
For this, yes, the city government, the city, yes.
Well, in terms of the residents of Eugene, we've engaged with many groups. But in terms of the city government, you know, I don't think there's been a lot of direct engagement with the city government, per se, around this. You know, most of the data, to be honest with you, the first nine months of this work was really going out, getting qualitative through, through community conversations and through, through data, really doing the assessment. Most of that data is at the county level. We can drill down to the zip code level, we can drill down to the census tract level, to the school district level on some things, but largely, that data is, is amassed at the county level.
So I want to say this in a, in a really nicest, nicest way, but I want to say that I think you're coming in and asking us to be part of this, and we do want to be part of this. We think it's very important. And if you really knew that, I mean, we've been engaged in this as part of our Envision Eugene conversation, the state is interested in it, we're, we're, we've been talking about this at many levels. So I personally feel it would have, I wish we had been
Earlier.
Involved earlier. And secondly, I think it would be really important for you to hear from our staff all the work that's already underway and how that connects to what you're already trying to do. And I did want to say that even I look on your list, and because I happen to be all things transportation these days, I, I think it's really important that you get ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation, involved in our area in this too, because in our local act meetings, when we're talking to all the other communities in Lane County about why they should care about health and the connection of health to transportation, it's a very difficult conversation right now. It's not, it's not something that you can assume they, they understand. And she's going to be joining us, I think, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I'm just going to be a stakeholder on that group, and that will help a lot. But there is a lot of language and a lot of understanding about why that matters in terms of land use and transportation discussion that needs to happen in, in many places. They really, they really don't understand it. We're going to do some work on the act, but it, but I just want to point to that one for you as well.
Well, all of those points are well-taken. And I guess I would, I would ask and invite, actually, maybe John, you could help with this, but if the city has recommendations for particular folks within city staff that are particularly well-suited to participate in these work groups, that would be wonderful. We do know there's a lot of expertise, a lot of work has been done by the city. Jennifer, I know has collaborated with several of them and others. But this is the time now, we're getting to work plans where we're going to need to actively engage them. So thank you for that.
The only other thing I wanted to mention was that I've been very conscious lately through some other works with other organizations, that there are places like, and I, and I think you were working with Bethel and other ways, but, you know, there, the lack of community gardens in certain parts of, of the community, that those kinds of, of things that are part of our job, but part of everybody's job to try to bring them to fruition. And they're just parts of the community that, that need more focus and other parts of the community for addressing these issues.
So one of the, one of the connections we have had is through, through the thriving communities work, and we've met with them on several occasions. One of the things we're hoping to do on that very point is to do mapping of the community.
On some.
Yeah. And so what we want to do is take that mapping work and, and really look where we need to focus, because we do have areas of the community that are underserved in terms of healthy food options and recreational options.
Well, one of the things you will find is that, I'm sure there's a lot we haven't done, but, but we have done some, some extensive mapping in our neighborhoods that will inform you, so that would be great.
I might actually build on some of Dan's earlier comments about involvement with the city. I think sometimes we forget everything we're doing because we're doing so much, but both Peace Health and Public Health have been involved in the HUD grant. And then also, we had a small Achieve grant a couple of years back, and that work really morphed into this work. And Renee gave us Sandy Schaefer from Parks and Recreation, who was, was and continues to be a fantastic partner in that, and we're continuing to work with her and with Elche on efforts to improve the food at the Parks and Recreation sites. And I could cite many other instances of working with the city staff.
And I just think like you, and I say this all the time at the city level, connecting those dots all the time is really a lot of the, a lot of the work. And I know that's true with, with you and with everybody. So all, all the work we can do to connect those dots, to reinforce what we're already doing and building on those things seems really important for us to take advantage of.
And I would like to really commend the city staff for their openness to this work. I haven't met a person who is not curious and does not want to get engaged. So from staff working on, you know, some of the climate and energy work, to staff working on food waste, to Parks and Rec, and other staff as well, so.
All right. Thank you for that. All right, George.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Very interesting. I've been kind of going through the material, but it's, it's quite a study, and I haven't finished it yet. Yeah, there's, yeah, some, some Yeah, there's, yeah, some mapping has been done. We know there's food deserts in Eugene, we know what parts of town they're in, where it's, you know, plenty of fast food and plenty of convenience food, but not a lot of healthy foods. We know about that, and hopefully, we'll be able to make something happen. And we know that there's certain areas of town where the children's asthma rates are, I won't say off the charts, but there's a huge anomaly, they're much higher than they should be, that they are in other parts of town. I had a question. On page 11 of the presentation, there's a chart there of about deaths per 100,000 from alcohol and suicide, and I was wondering, is that like a multi-year trend, or is that last year's statistics, or?
Those are, I believe that's 2011 data, if I recall.
2011, okay.
Again, it's a single point in time.
Sure, yeah, I understand.
My understanding is this reflects period. That chart doesn't, but we've had issues in those two areas. We've stood out in the negative for some time.
Extremely small font says 2008 here, which I'm guessing was the most recent data we had available, but it has been a trend for some time.
Yeah, and we, and the data, as we've gone forward, has looked about the same.
One of the challenge, we didn't show you, if you'd like the full set, we can give you all of the data. One of the very curious things related to that was really the use of alcohol and substance abuse at eighth grade, 11th grade, at the U of O, and you look at those trends, and you can see just an unbelievable rate of substance use in our, in young people within Lane County. And so, that is, I think, what stimulated a lot of concern and a lot of effort related to those things. So, the incidence of alcohol use in the U of O population is 80%, and binge drinking, which oftentimes leads to these types of alcohol-ingested deaths, is very high. And again, that's, again, I know the university's putting a lot of attention and efforts into that, but it's a significant health concern.
Yeah, I looked, I did look at that subset of data in the material. My, I guess, just as a general question, I figured if this is a year's, you know, year's figures, 18% is about 60, approximately 62 deaths in each category. And I'm just wondering, do we know the age grouping? I mean, is it predominantly younger people?
I don't know the, yeah, I don't know the specific dates, ages. We do know that it is the younger population that tends, because alcoholism as it, and older people generally doesn't lead to a toxic death, because they typically are chronic users and have developed, you know, fear and tolerance to alcohol. So, it's almost always in younger people who don't have, haven't had ongoing exposure.
This is directly due to alcohol abuse, like severe alcoholic poisoning.
Correct.
And generally, a long-term alcoholic will develop other health problems that
Usually cirrhosis.
Will be listed as the cause of death, but really, you know, the base was probably alcohol abuse.
You're right.
Okay, so, and I know that, you know, suicide with young people is a tremendous problem also, so my guess is most of these are.
Average age of suicide in our community is 46.
Oh, really? Okay, that's kind of what I was getting at, thank you, all right.
Yeah, so you look at the lost productivity and effect on lives around, that's pretty significant.
Sure, okay, thank you.
All right, I've got Alan, and then Claire, and then Chris. Did I get everybody? Okay.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Excellent presentation. It is kind of a bit of a fire hose, but it's also kind of disturbing, the facts and figures that you're presenting. It seems like we're getting worse, not better. But then, at the end, it was somewhat uplifting in that you talked about ways that we can, that we can do things to actually improve health in the community. And what I want to get is examples. I know the action plan has some specific examples in it, but for, I wanted to kind of pick your brains about what you thought were the best ideas in a couple of different areas, about examples of the way that the city might do things, might do something to promote health. For instance, on slide 32, promote mental health and reduce substance abuse, some generic things about what we should do, but anybody have any specific things that you'd like to see us do? This is kind of your opportunity to say that.
So, I believe the city's done some work in this area already in working with particular establishments that are identified as troubled areas, that were maybe selling some of the high-octane beverages in the large servings. I know there's been some conversations with business owners and some changes along those lines, but one of the things that we'd like to see to reduce abuse by youth is reduce access, so fewer places where you could purchase alcohol, for example, of all kinds, and anything we can do to make it more expensive. Youth are particularly sensitive to price, so we could look at things there as well, and zoning and concentration of alcohol outlets. And one thing that I've looked at, that's been mapped in other communities, is the density of alcohol outlets in particularly lower-income areas, or areas that are already experiencing disparities. And so, what we'll see is not just alcohol, but also tobacco, and soda, and other food that's particularly, things that we want to avoid as much as possible, really concentrated in areas where we have the highest smoking rates, and the highest obesity rates, and the highest poverty rates as well. So, really looking at some of the zoning around all of these issues and licensing.
Patrick and Kate, you want to say something about that?
Well, I think that there's a couple of things. Clearly, the advertising related to both alcohol and tobacco are targeted at the younger population, and again, even some of the ability to access those substances in stores is variable, and we don't necessarily comply always with some of the age regulations related to those things. So, again, tightening up those types of restrictions is always helpful, and with respect to the advertising, again, there's, you know, obviously limitations with what we can regulate or not, but it's clearly that is the focus of the industry. And again, as you saw, the data, almost everyone that's going to smoke learns to smoke before they're 19. So, it's over 95% of smokers start at that point, and so, that's the, the focus is really at that age group. So, things that we can do to affect that, and clearly, the cost of a pack of cigarettes is by far the greatest deterrent for that, and even the cost of alcohol does affect some of those choices. And so, as far as mental health, we're literally looking at our delivery system to try to begin to address many of the issues related to screening, identification early of folks that are vulnerable, and we're particularly targeting the school-age groups to look at mental health awareness, looking at, we've focused efforts in Trillium to look at trying to create ways of better decision-making early on through a good behavior game, which we're instituting in schools in the first grade, which helps people with decision-making, and shows long-term that they use less substances, including alcohol, tobacco, and actually have a higher graduation rate than populations that don't have that one-year experience. So, we're taking Trillium Medicaid funds and directly funding education. So, it's those types of creative things that begin to look at mental health, look at awareness, look at how we make decisions, and that's, again, why we have to partner with education, particularly because many of those decision points are very significant, how they make choices around substances, as well as just how we deal with stress. And we're in a very stressful environment. We have a large number of children that are exposed to unbelievable levels of violence and dysfunction. How do you help try to create a supportive environment so that they don't go down that same pathway, and they learn how to make better choices? So, that's where the effort is, and we may not be able to target sort of the end of that line, but we want to get in front of it, and so, that's where many of our efforts will go.
Some of you might, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What, some of you might have had an opportunity to read a guest opinion piece in the Register Guard, probably about a month ago, by Tony Biglin from Oregon Research Institute, and I thought he was very articulate in reminding us that the science of behavior and mental health included in that has really advanced tremendously in recent years, and that we do know of strategies that can reduce, long-term, the probability that individuals will engage in a variety of different high-risk behaviors, be it substance abuse, or smoking, or whatever. So, he summarizes by saying, there's some interventions that can cross all of these risk areas, smoking, obesity, alcohol, and so forth, drug use, crime, criminal behavior, and it's distilled onto those strategies that can create nurturing environments. And one Rick just cited, but there are others that we really need to explore more and see how we could further disseminate across the community to help create nurturing environments where there's lower stress, better decision-making, and so that the probability that kids will grow to make poor decisions is reduced.
So, education at an early level really pays off in the long run.
Well, as in most prevention efforts, the earlier you can address these issues, the best the return you're going to get.
Yeah, we've also looked at things at the city like high-octane malt liquors and things like that, preventing them, but at a city level, we're not allowed to do that because there are state laws, same with some of the other things that we've tried to look at. Another example that I'd like to have you look at, or give me, is related to the obesity, and it says you have, on slide 30, examples of taxes incentive, land use, and zoning regulations. Kind of touched a little bit on that, about, any examples of what other cities have done?
So, some of what we're seeing in some cities is deciding that one particular town or area of town has enough fast food, for example. So, I believe it's East LA has said, we have enough fast food here, we will not allow any more fast food restaurants to open up within this geographical area. And there's also work being done to keep such establishments, for example, further away from schools, so within, you know, 1,000 feet, or further from schools.
Also, some, a couple of cities have done where they required, a couple of states, calories on menus where you actually have that.
So, we have that coming, actually, at a national level. So, here in Lane County, we were having that conversation at the county level a few years ago, and during the midst of that conversation, a statewide law was passed, and then that law was actually preempted by legislation in the Affordable Care Act. So, the details of that are still being worked out, and I hope we'll see it soon. It's been quite a while, and the coming, in my opinion, but we should see that. So, it is included in the Affordable Care Act, and once the details are worked out, we will be able to have calorie information for chain restaurants with 20 or more chains.
What about at the local level for smaller, one shop, two-shop kind of folks? Is that kind of information very accessible, or easy to create, or easy to access?
There is actually preemption of work along those lines included in the Affordable Care Act, so sort of with the discussions around requiring it at chain restaurants. At the federal level, it's been agreed that there won't be additional calorie requirements. So, we're, when that comes out, we're essentially done with that work for now, unless we can change that legislation to allow for it.
Okay.
Okay, Claire?
Thanks. But you can always ask your local establishment to post that information as a public benefit, even if they're not required to do so. So, I just had a few comments, and this will serve as both a disclosure and a shameless plug. So, I, in my day job, run a nonprofit called Elche, the Lane Coalition for Healthy Active Youth, and we're working directly on promoting policies throughout Lane County that would try to get at the childhood obesity epidemic. And so, we've been partnering with Lane County Public Health, and we've also participated in some of the work that went into creating this plan, and maybe coming before this body to encourage policies to be adopted at the city level that would get at some of the strategies that are being discussed in this outline. And so, I just also wanted to highlight a little bit of what the city has done. So, I don't know what the status is on this, but the city has applied for a federal grant called the PEP grant that would engage the City of Eugene Recreation Department in enhancing physical activity education, or physical education, excuse me, in our schools, in 4J in particular, I believe. So, if they get that funding, there'll be some additional programming for physical education for kids in Eugene. And also, the Recreation Department's been a real leader in reducing access to sugary drinks in our pools, and replacing a lot of the typical vending machines you might see with more healthful choices, so there are choices. People can still bring all their own foods from home that they'd like, but what's being sold on city property is a lot more healthful than what you might expect to see. So, I just wanted to highlight that. I think the city, and then there's all the bike ped work as well, that it gets around to the physical activity thing. So, I agree when Jennifer says the city staff has been very open to viewing a lot of this work through a public health lens. I think that's very encouraging and bodes well for anything this council might want to put forward on that level. The one concerns I, or amongst the concerns I had in terms of what was presented around substance abuse and mental health work, I serve on the Police Commission, I serve on the Human Services Commission, and in both those venues, we see the real detrimental impact of substance abuse, and not even, you know, obviously not always just alcohol, but also illegal substances, and also the impact of mental health. So, I'm really hoping that as we go forward in this process, we can find, whether it's at the city level, or the county level, or bringing the state involved, that we can really shore up the interventions and the strategies around substance abuse and mental health care. I think there's a crying need out there for that, and while it may not be resulting in deaths, it's certainly resulting in the destruction of lives, so that's one place I'd like to see stronger.
All right, next, Chris.
Thank you. Great presentation. To cut directly into how the City of Eugene could be involved, because I think that really is an important point, and part of the opportunities, but the challenges as well, is we approach, and we've had these conversations before, about the role of the city in dealing with conditions and dealing with behaviors. Many of the elements we talk about today are relative to conditions. People are obese, people have diseases related to alcohol use, people have access to health care. Education, income, health are all conditions. One of the challenges we've had as a city council is deciding what our appropriate role is in changing behavior. And you can't go very far into a discussion around health without beginning to start to ask questions about behavior. If I ate the right things, I wouldn't have diabetes. If I stopped smoking, then that number would go down. So, it is absolutely essential that you consider behavioral elements if you really want to have a significant impact on health. The City of Eugene, though, is saying what is appropriate as a role as a policymaker in affecting behavior. To what degree can we tell people what they can and cannot do? And each member at this table has a different comfort level with regard to what we can and can't tell people to do. When you're talking about the conditions, I don't think you'll have any problem. I mean, that goes all the way down to the staff level, and operationally, the staff can say, what can we do to help relieve these certain conditions, provide greater access? You know, I don't think we could go to the point of zoning to say you can or can't have fast food restaurants, that's a behavioral element, but providing access to healthy food at convenience stores within certain parts of town? That's going to be for us, the delicate balance, is where can we find that magic, appropriate sweet spot in doing very effective things to deal with a lot of the conditions that we can actually have an impact on? And there's a whole list of them here, and I think we could jump on those and say, what are those conditional things we can affect? What will be the more interesting conversation for us, and where we have to figure out what our comfort level is, is to what degree we can be also engaged with you on affecting behavior? Because you want to have improvement to the health in the community, and you can't really do that until you start talking behavior. Maybe a key to that is to talk about behavioral change, not so much as a push, but as a pull. There may be some things we can do to help pull appropriate behavior by creating the right levels of incentives, or activities, or other kinds of things that would be very comfortable for us, that we could do, and our community would not rebel against us. So, I would encourage us to figure out what are those conditional stuff we can do, let's work on some behavioral stuff that's appropriate and effective for us to work on.
And I think, you know, there's many things I could say to that. One of the things to keep in mind is, I don't think there are many people among us who don't want to eat better, and that don't want to exercise more. And what we're really doing by creating healthy food environments, so more farmers' markets, more community gardens, things that, you know, people want, we're making it easier for
for people to access those choices. And we're not making anyone go to the farmer's market or participate in community gardening. We're just making those options available for people and really looking at where in our community they are available, and so that there's access for everyone. So, I think, you know, that's, when we think about healthy food, going to Claire's comment, we're really working to provide some healthy options. I remember as a child growing up in Oregon and going to the swimming pool, and what you could get was a Red Vine and a soda, and there wasn't something else. So, we're not really, you know, providing options for people if that's the environment we have. In terms of tobacco, some of the data that we're getting, so the Surgeon General in 2006 released a report that shows that there is no safe level of exposure to tobacco smoke, so even outside. So, what we know is that where someone who is smoking outside in a public environment even is affecting the health of others. So, really, it's, you know, how are we looking at these issues? And are we really considering, you know, the exposure and how, you know, my behavior is impacting someone else? I mean, there was a time, and when we think about where we've come as well, I mean, there was a time in my lifetime, I don't know exactly what year, when we could smoke in this building. You know, I've chatted with staff here who, you know, people were smoking at their desks. We could smoke in the supermarket. We could smoke on airplanes. You know, we've really come a long way with that, and from what I see, our community's ready for more. We just had the U of O go tobacco-free on their entire campus, and that went exceptionally well. And we have reduced exposure there. We're getting a lot of reports of people quitting. I think the data point we had here was 69% of people want to quit, the vast majority. We did some work even in HACSA housing. We did some survey work of HACSA residents, and among HACSA residents, the vast majority wanted tobacco-free housing. So, in February of 2011, they went tobacco-free indoors. So, there's demand for these things, and I think that we might not realize how much demand that there is from our community. I get calls every day about concerns of exposure to tobacco smoke, mostly in apartment complexes. That's the most common call I get. And then, you know, constant comments about outdoor tobacco exposure as well. So...
Great.
So, we are going to have to wrap up because we have to transition between this and the next meeting, but Betty's the last one out.
We can still...
Okay. I think light is important to mental health, and I wonder why we meet in this, keep the gates closed in this room. That is...
I agree with that.
I was wondering.
Second.
Yeah, it's hurting my mental health. I think, as several people have said, I think we should concentrate on the things that the city can do. We can't do a lot of things to make people be better. The best thing we did was stop smoking in restaurants and bars, which was one of the best community efforts I've ever seen, with the people who worked on us to get us to do that, and for over a period of time. I think for food, we can't make people eat something, but as has been said, encouraging community gardens, making them accessible, and protecting agricultural land, which has to do with not expanding the urban growth boundary into agricultural land. We can do what we can to help the farmer's market, anti-farmer's markets. And the water quality and the air quality, we do have some control over, and they're very important aspects of health. Industries that pollute should not be encouraged. We could take a stand when someone's asking to pollute some more. And back to the Amazon headwaters, to protect the water quality for us and for people downstream is important. Thank you.
The only other thing I would just add for us and for you to think about is, I think when we know that there are populations that are being more affected than other populations in our community, that when we do things like summer in the city or other kinds of things, if we can think about how the things we're offering, whether they're culturally appealing and whether they draw or provide something for those parts of the community, we can better focus what we do as a city to try to help raise the health of those more affected populations in our community. I really think that is something we can do. If we really look through the lens of what we're already offering and who's not participating and who is, and how it would help if we found a way to better bring them in, I think that's something we could really make a difference within our own toolbox. So, thank you very, very much, and I...
Thank you.
For the opportunity.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Look forward to partnering with you.
Thank you, me too. Did you close the meeting?